Item 8C, request for a motion to approve, discussion, motion to discuss and approve a citizen working group for aquifer source water protection and oil and gas ordinance.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
We've got a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Chapman.
Yeah, just in regards to this motion, and the way it's worded, and, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what is this group attempting to do? I mean, is there clear direction for this group to come up with something?
Yes, by the way, I have a little process problem here. I should have taken comment from the public on this before we got into motions, so let's hear from the public.
I'll yield, and we can have a public comment.
I'm sorry?
I said I'll yield the floor, so you can have a public comment, if you like.
Thank you, sorry. Oh, who are you gonna call? Ghostbusters, Marlo Atencio. Think we need him about now.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Mario Atencio, Torreon, Sanneval County, not the Torrance one, but Sanneval County. So I have some written responses here. Currently, the Department of Interior Secretary Ryan Zinke, today, March 1st, 2018, has canceled oil and gas leases for the March lease sale in northwest of Mexico, which is in-
Could you get a little closer to that microphone, because I'm not getting every you're saying?
So, today, Department of Interior, US Department of Interior Secretary Ryan Zinke canceled oil and gas lease sales. That was supposed to happen in March, up in the council region, in the far northwest section of Sanneval County. And they said they were going to defer leases because they needed to do more cultural consultation. That was timely news, 5:00 this evening. This action by the Department of Interior must signal Sanneval County to follow their lead and do its best due diligence to ensure the county is properly consulting with all applicable Navajo Nation governments, as a large majority of the current operating wells are in the tri-chapter community of Councilor Torreon and Ojoh Inzino. These governments, Navajo Nation governments, must include the local chapter-level governments, like Councilor Chapter. The proposed working, working citizens' group and their recommendations must reflect that according to the draft 2012 BLM Rio Perco Field Office Resource Management Plan, according to that plan, nearly all the potential fluid mineral resources in Sanneval County lie on or very near indigenous Navajo and Pueblo homelands. In addition to air quality, water quality, and environmental justice issues, these lands may also have significant cultural resources on them. The Sanneval County government must have meaningful consultation and dialogue to discuss with tribal nations and their governments, to discuss the best way to approach the idea of regulating oil and gas development in Sanneval County. And so, when you're doing this working group, there is issues in that those communities, about 4,000, 5,000, 6,000 people rely on aquifers that are in Sanneval County, namely in the Ojoh Inzino, Ojoh Inzino community, which the president of the community is sitting behind me, sitting in the crowd, waiting very patiently. For instance, we are asking for no lateral, no lateral occupancy within 1,000 feet of where those wells are being drilled for community consumption in those aquifers. And so, that's my comment to you, US Commissioners, to take that into consideration now that you're going to start working out what are you going to do with oil and gas leasing and water quality. Thank you.
Okay. And next, we have Alan Friedman.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Mario, can you answer a couple of questions for me, because I know you got this information pretty much? Can you tell me how many wells are in the Precinct 2024?
I just want to let the commission know how many wells are actually in the Councilors, Ojoh Inzino, and Torreon area. This is not inclusive of the Hicaria Nation.
So are you saying-
Talking about Navajo Nation land?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chairman, are you talking about? Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yeah. 453 wells are currently in Precinct 24.
Is that on tribal land, or is that in Sanneval County?
It's on BLM land, BLM tribal land.
It's on Sanneval County.
In Sanneval County.
And Sanneval County. So it's inclusive, even though if it's on BLM, but it's still in Sanneval County.
But it's still on tribal, it's still on a tribal nation, correct? So they are doing drilling in the tribal nation?
And so, when you look at the populated blocks here, those are all Sanneval County citizens, and they vote in Sanneval County elections, they're his constituents. So it's 453 in there, so when you look at the amount of councilor wells, which you see on the legend, 60% of all current active wells are in the councilor, council community. The community services coordinator was here, but he left because he had to drive back home. That's a huge thing, so when you talk about impacts of this working group, the larger impacts of oil and gas leases are now disproportionately affecting Navajo, Sanneval County voters in the very far northeastern section of Sanneval County, which is-
Okay, so this is all District 5, Commissioner, Vice Chair, Ike Walts District, these precincts, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I understand. So, again, it looks like, you know, a few hundred of these wells are on tribal nation. I mean, you've got Hicaria, 176 wells, is that on the Hicaria, in the Hicaria Nation?
Yes.
Mr. Commissioner, folks-
I just want to make sure I understand the chart.
Our focus, I agree that this is an issue that needs to be dealt with, but the focus here is whether we're going to establish a citizens' working group not to solve all the problems, but this ought to be a data piece that we include in it.
Mr. Chairman, we've been discussing with the tri-chapter about an individual sitting on that, on the citizens' group, so-
Absolutely.
And so, Mr. Warito, you'll let us know?
Yes.
All right.
We are meeting on that issue, and we don't want to see what's happening up there down here in these other precincts. This is what we're trying to do.
Yeah, and my comments is for that working group to take into account of the federal change out there.
Right.
And just to know that there is significant impacts, and not just-
Thank you. Mr. Friedman.
Good evening, it's not as late as some other evenings. Chairman Howland and County Commissioners, my name is Alan Friedman, and I reside at 52 Anasazi Trail-
Can we start the clock?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, can we start the clock?
Yes, I'm in favor of the establishment of the Albuquerque Basin Aquifer Water Protection and Oil and Gas working citizens' working group. It's a mouthful. I applaud you for your efforts to establish the citizens' working group, which, by the way, is much easier to say. I especially want to thank Commissioner Holden Rhodes for taking leadership role on this issue, and, you know, we're talking about the Albuquerque Basin, but as we hear, there are other aquifers that need protection in the county as well, so I think it's important for the citizens who know the issue to be involved, so. Appointing Donna Phillips as an independent leader of the citizens' working group is an excellent choice, and Donna has a great background to serve as a leader of this working group. And the citizens selected of this working group represent all political entities of the county. I know many of them, and they are excellent choices as well. And I have confidence that the people selected by the Navajo Nation and the Pueblos will be excellent choices as well. Over the past two years, you've heard extensively from ordinary citizens of Sanneval County, the tribes of the county, the mayor of Burnaleo, citizens outside the county. Protection of the Albuquerque Basin Aquifer, the only source of water for hundreds of thousands of people, is truly a regional issue. The aquifer knows no political boundaries. The citizens' working group must report directly to you, the Sanneval County Commission. I understand that perhaps one of you feels that the efforts of the working group should go through planning and zoning. Doing this would be a mistake. This issue goes beyond anything the Planning and Zoning Commission has ever dealt with before, protection of the aquifer. Furthermore, reporting directly to you, the county commission, the highest elected body in our county sends a strong message to other political jurisdictions in the Albuquerque Basin, the cities, towns, villages, and sovereign nations of our county, and the local governments of Burnaleo and Valencia County. That Sanneval County is serious about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Donna Dow.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair, Mr. Heil. My name's Donna Dow, I'm a nurse practitioner, I've lived and worked in the county for many years, you've seen me before you, speaking on health effects of oil and gas, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I'm pleased to bring you a message of thanks. Thank you for listening to your constituents who have been asking for a better ordinance. Thank you for voting down the Stoddard ordinance. Thank you in advance, hope, for affording the county's communities an opportunity to participate in building a reasonable and protective ordinance and voice their priorities. That is through the formation of a citizens' working group. Thank you for building an even greater awareness of water issues as they relate to oil and gas through your potential plan for a Albuquerque Basin consortium. Thank you for taking the time needed to do it right, which is not always the easiest thing to do. Thank you for caring to understand the complicated aspects, and impacts, and potential impacts on our environment and our communities from oil and gas development. And a special thanks to Commissioner Dr. Holden Rhodes for prioritizing water protection. Commissioners' plans to protect water, air, wilderness, and wildlife are indeed plans to protect us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Erickson.
Chairman, Commissioners, I'm going to keep this brief. The three people that spoke before me said it better than I could say it, so all I'm going to say here tonight is thank you, Commissioner Rhodes, Holden Rhodes, and thank the rest of you for making this opportunity happen. I certainly hope it goes forward, and I look forward to the outcome. I believe you've got some really fine people proposed as being members, and I just am looking forward to a positive outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael T. Sanneval.
I don't know who put my name back there.
You what?
He's back.
Take your name off there?
Yes.
Okay, now, that brings us back to Commissioner Chapman was in the midst of saying something, and we yield the floor back to him.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, based on the public comment, it sounds like there's some people that have already made decisions about who these folks are going to be on the citizens' committee, and I would just like to know who they are. And then, you know, back to my original question of, you know, what is it that this citizens' working group is supposed to be working on? And what would be, you know, their goal in coming together?
Good questions. I'm going to ask for other comments from the Commissioners, because I expect some of those answers will come out of those.
Okay, but do you know who the people are? It sounds like there's several people in the public who have already decided who's going to lead this group, who's going to be in the group.
Yes.
I heard Mr. Friedman specifically say that Donna Phillips was going to lead the group.
The proposal on the table is that Donna T. Phillips, writer, author, geologist, oil and gas exploration person, and former three-term mayor of Fairview, Texas, was talked to and asked if he would help coordinate a group of people who had expertise in the various fields that would be related to a discussion about water and oil and gas.
Does he by chance even live in our county?
Yes.
He does?
He lives in Placetus.
He lives in Placetus. I think it's Placetus.
Right.
Okay. And then, who are the other folks?
Well, I think you know who John Arango is. I can go down here and read this list. Do you have a copy of this list?
Can we get a copy?
I do not.
Okay, all right, we have John Arango, former chairman, Sanneval County Planning and Zoning Commission, 20 years' experience in the Sanneval County ordinance process. From Burnaleo, we have Phoebe Suina, environmental engineer and management, environmental management owner, High Watermark Environmental Consulting Company.
Suina?
Phoebe Suina.
S-U-I-N-A.
Right. And we have, from Cochee Lake, we have David Craig, computer science, 34 years professional programming experience, and chairman of the Cochee Lake Zoning Board. From Corales, we have Mary Feldman, PhD in sociology and economics, former chairman of the Corales P&amp;Z Commission, worked in policy issues for over three decades in state and local levels, including expertise in oil and gas accountability project. From Cuba, we have Aparcio C. Herrera Jr., chairman, Sanneval County Planning and Zoning Commission, owner of the Copper Mug Cuba. La Madera, Phil, Bill Deaton, chemical engineer, math and economics, executive MBA from Stanford. From Placetus.
Deaton?
D-E-A-T-U-N.
Phil Deaton.
Bill.
Bill?
Bill.
Is he the, is he the sound guy? The guy that's come and done the sound stuff?
No, 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 no.
Somebody else, huh?
Yeah. As I recall, Mr. Deaton had prepared a document that showed the various elements that should be considered in ordinance. That's my experience with Mr. Deaton. Placetus, Bill Brown, geologist, professional hydrologist, investigating and cleaning up of soil, groundwater by hydrocarbons, is also owner of Brown Environmental. And from Pueblo, from one of the Pueblos, Alicia Ortega, she's pending tribal leadership, oh, that's pending her approval of the tribal leadership. She's the executive director at all Pueblo Council Governors. She got the marketing MBA, business administration, organizational management. Also from the Pueblos to be named, pending tribal leadership approval. And from Rio Rancho, we have Edward Paulsgrove, a geologist, US Army Corps of Engineers, and US Army paratrooper. We also have two county support liaisons who are non-voting, that's Peter Adang and Keith Brown. And from this document, it says, participation would be the expectation's maximum citizen participation. Each member is encouraged to contact interested citizens and solicit input. A call for papers from interested Sanneval County citizens. Technical, scientific reviews, expect to review Sanneval County Commission New Mexico Tech Study, the Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Water Advisory Board commissioned, a aquifer study to confer with them, and other pertinent or related studies. In coordination with the Albuquerque Basin Consortium, that's all the governments in Sanneval County, Burnaleo County, Valencia County, and the Pueblo Nations. In product, present a joint recommendation for action directly to the Sanneval County Commissioners. Produce a comprehensive Albuquerque Basin Aquifer Source Water Protection Oil and Gas Ordinance directly to the Sanneval County Commissioners for consideration and approval. Recommended timeline, four months.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, there's one area that wasn't mentioned, was it tri-chapter in Navajo Nation? Was that on there? I didn't hear that.
I've got to display my ignorance here. There is another Pueblo position, I don't know whether that's tri-chapter or not tri-chapter, so you'll have to help me with that.
The Pueblo positions, there's two Pueblo positions?
Correct.
And then, the tri-chapter, which is going to be the Navajo Nation area up in-
That certainly could be a recommendation as to, I'm just, this is the draft of the proposal, and-
I want to make sure that if there is any inclusion in that-
Right, and would be open to discussion as to amending, enhancing, et cetera, that's why it's here.
So, Mr. Chairman, my question is, how did this group get developed? Who was it that organized this group and said, these are the people that should be on this citizens' group?
There was some discussion, I'm sure, with Commissioner Holden Rhodes, I had some conversation with Phillips, suggested that they go out and propose a list of qualified people to participate in this group, and that's what's on the table.
I guess the only issue with that, yeah, I got the list, the only issue with that is none of the rest of us had any input.
This is it.
Oh, this is it. Oh, okay.
Sometimes you put a straw man on the table, and you say, let's beat it up, or let's agree with it.
Well, that's why I was asking the questions, you know. The reality is, there's been a huge amount of effort here at Sanneval County to get an ordinance done. And, yeah, I'm sure we can find some people who live in the community who don't agree, you know, with the ordinance that was put together after a ton of public input from a lot of the same people that are in the room tonight. I guess one of the questions I have is, other than Mr. Arango, who I recognize in the room, are any of these other people here?
I don't know, are you here?
Mary's here, okay, other than Mary and John, and the gentleman in the red jacket? I don't know him.
I'm David Curry, right.
Okay. Phoebe, ah, okay, Phoebe in Corales, right?
And-
No? Burnaleo. Okay.
And we do have, we do have the representatives that are going to be looking at the all-Indian Pueblo Council. Those members have not been named yet, and neither has, and I'm still proposing, making sure that the tri-chapter area for the Navajo Nation does not get neglected. Mr. Can you recognize Mr. Warito, Chairman?
I'd be glad to. Mr. Warito, you are recognized.
He wants to-
Could you step forward, so we can really recognize you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing we don't have on here is, we cover the Hickory Apaches too. There's a majority of the wells in that area, in the Hickory Apaches, in the Sanneval County. So we might just, you know, have somebody else from that area to represent on this committee. Thank you.
Seeing as that's Commissioner Ike Walts' territory, I mean, it might be up to him to, if he wanted to amend this list, to recommend somebody to fit on the list.
Or maybe he'll accept a recommendation. I can think of a gentleman that works for Hickory Oil and Gas Consortium who would make an excellent addition to this body.
Just to expand on my comment earlier, reason why we're trying to really focus on the tri-chapter, especially Ojoh Inzino, is that those aquifers, there is land exchange between the BLM and the state of New Mexico in that region. So this does fall within us that really finding avenue for consultations, that those are basically near those aquifers.
Could you educate me on the tri-chapter?
A tri-chapter consists of the communities of Councilor Ojoh Inzino and Torreon, they're a loosely cooperative group of three Navajo chapters on the very far eastern edge of Navajo Nation, of what's called Big Navajo.
The far western part of Sanneval County.
Far eastern, yeah, far west of-
Far east of Navajo, but far west of Sanneval County.
And so, we make a significant voting percentage in multiple races, and it's a very important swing area, and I think Commissioner Ike Walts knows that. It's about anywhere from 4,000 to 6,000 people that live out there. And so, these, and as you saw on the map, Councilors, that's where the majority of the wells are now, current active horizontally fracked wells are in that area. And so, they come together to work and collaborate on large regional projects. So that's-
Thank you. Let's see, any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Chapman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, so I would like to have this commission afford me the opportunity to make a couple of recommendations to this body. I can think of some real appropriate people who have published under peer review in this body of knowledge that is oil and gas, aquifers, and geology, and so on and so forth here in the state of New Mexico. Don't know if the gentleman will be able to make himself available, because he doesn't live here in the state, but I can assure you, this is an expert in the field. And then, also, I don't know if I can get-
Wait, wait, just a minute, did you state a name, and I missed it?
No, I said, well, I didn't say a name, but-
Oh, okay, I just-
Yeah, no, the gentleman's been here before. His name's Dr. Vogler, and he is-
Oh, I know, I remember him.
A very well-written expert in the field of geology, aquifers, oil and gas operations in the state of New Mexico, no question. In fact, I'd put him up against anybody in the state in terms of his body of knowledge. Might as well have a few experts in the midst, huh? Then, I also, and I'm reluctant to throw a name out, but I will tell you, there is a person that works for the current administration of Washington who would be a perfect person to be a part of this group. She's aware of what's going on in Sanneval County. She is a Native American and works for the Trump administration, and if I could talk her into it, I think she'd be a huge person to be a part of this group, and provide a perspective that, you know, maybe is needed with this group. So I just want to be able to recommend those two people, maybe one more, and, I mean, the group's already, you know what, we got here, 12 people. I wouldn't think two or three more is going to make a difference, especially with, if I heard you right, what you're asking this group to do. Did I hear you say you want this group to craft an ordinance for the commission to consider?
That's what it says at the last end of the end product.
Just wanted to hear it again.
So, the way I would, this is what was presented along with this item on the agenda, and this is a request for a motion to discuss and approve, so I think the appropriate approach would be, if anybody has amendments to this, that we would amend it and get support from the rest of the commission, and-
Yeah, and, you know, just like we did with the ethics ordinance, as much time as we have in in this effort, two weeks ain't going to make a difference. So, if we could table till I have time to make my recommendations to this body, folks that I think would be appropriate to participate, like I say, one of them I'm going to have to reach out to and see if she's willing to do it. And then, the gentleman from Hickory, I think would be a nice addition.
Is that Mr. Rivera?
Yeah.
Or no?
No, I can't think of his name right now, but he would be an excellent addition, I think. And then, one other thing that I think you ought to consider, Mr. Chairman, and this commission ought to consider, having somebody as a part of this group who is knowledgeable in the area of state statute, because, you know, one of the challenges with crafting an ordinance here in Sanneval County, as it involves oil and gas, is the preemption of the county by other regulatory bodies. So, that is a key component to trying to put together any kind of ordinance. You know, I don't want these folks to waste their time working on this thing for four months and bringing documents that just won't stand up to the preemption thing. You know, we're not going to craft an ordinance here in Sanneval County, that's, and I won't have a part of crafting an ordinance here in Sanneval County that- that preempts state or federal laws, just that simple. And, uh, we don't have the authority to do it either. So I think it'd be nice to have somebody on that, it, that group that's knowledgeable about that particular situation. And, uh, I'm not quite sure who that person would be, but I can tell you, it more than likely would be somebody from either the Industry Association or the industry, because they're well aware of the laws. And, uh, Mary's saying they aren't, which, you know... Yeah, and, and I'm sure you got all the answers. Uh, but, uh, nevertheless, yeah, I, I know Mary's got all the answers. I've been listening to them for two years, but I, that, that's my input, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I think that makes the process a little fairer. Like I say, two weeks, uh, at this point, doesn't make a difference.
I'm not worried about that, I'm worried about other comments from Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
From you and me so far.
Um, I have met with, uh, Mr. Phillips regarding this working group. Um, for the most part, I support the concept of it. Um, I'm interested to see a couple of things, either the, um, a charter governing the rules and responsibilities of the Citizens Working Group. I think that needs to be laid out for us as Commissioners to understand, uh, what exactly the Citizens Working Group is and, and, um, uh, how it also, I, I've talked to, uh, Mr. Phillips about it, about, uh, some policy issues I have. And I've talked to Dr. Felbloom, I've talked to Dr. Friedman, and, um, I'll, I'll hold my comments, uh, here in a minute, but I'd like to hear from the other Commissioners briefly. On page two, the, um, I'm sorry, the end product, there's two bullet statements there. Uh, one is produce a comprehensive, uh, Albuquerque Basin aquifer source, water protection, oil and gas ordinance directly to the Sandoval County Commissioners for consideration or approval. Um, I, I don't know what, what exactly that means or that entails, if that's something that's more appropriate through the P and Z. If not, if it goes to the commission, that's fine, I accept that. The other bullet's the top bullet, present a joint recommendation for action directly to the Sandoval County Commissioners. Now, it's no secret how I feel about that being, um, to make sure that we go through the appropriate process. And, you know, I, I still have a, a lot of thinking to do on this, but right now I'm leaning toward, uh, going through the Planning and Zoning Commission. But I mean, I understand the, um, some of the concerns that, uh, others have brought up, uh, avoiding the Planning and Zoning Commission. I just think that, you know, they are there to serve a purpose. They're a quasi-judicial body that is appointed by us as elected officials. And I would like to know what the other Commissioners feel their role is, should be, or should they be eliminated from this process altogether? Thank you.
H.R.
This is the most important thing that this commission will ever do. A very wide selection of people were queried, questioned, in order to put together this group. And I think the group is very representative of all the entities that we want to pull together. The Citizens Working Group is also tasked to turn to those around them for input. And so what we wanted was maximum citizen participation. This is about we the people. But it's also a very finite understanding that aquifer, source water, has to be protected. It's, it's life. I think after, after listening to discussion with, with David, with Alan, with Phoebe, with a, with a host of people, talking to Commissioner Ike Wald, Commissioner Heil, um, I, I think, I, I think we have the magic group. B, what it is, what is it that they're to do? And that is to create a document to be approved by the, the commission that will serve as the oil and gas ordinance with protection for the aquifer. By design, there are three people within the group who either were on or are on the P and Z board. So again, we try to be all-inclusive, but to be focused. I think we have the magic number of folks. I think we have the right names. And I could babble for the rest of the evening, but I won't. I would like to see us move on this now and accept it as it is. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Ike Wald.
When we first started, uh, or started having these, uh, commission meetings where we had two or three hundred people, the main focus, a lot of the focus was on the, uh, not having tribal collaboration with, uh, any of the ordinance. That, to me, is one of the most important part of, of this ordinance. Uh, and, and the crafting of the ordinance, everybody has to buy in. Um, and by having, uh, the Native American community appoint people to represent them and bring in their views as to how this ordinance should be crafted is very, very important to me. But not just in that aspect, but also, my district as, uh, as it sits is the only district that produces oil and gas. So we should have a main source in this. You know, we, we looked at the part of the, the ordinance, and it says Albuquerque Basin. Well, yes, it's, it's extremely important to look at the Albuquerque Basin, but what about the rest of Sandoval County? And how is it going to affect that, those aquifers in our area? And Mr. Attentia alluded to that. So, you know, uh, in, in listening to Commissioner Chapman, I, I think he has a valid point. You know, uh, everybody had an opportunity to, to put people in, uh, or not put people in, but were asked for recommendations. I think he needs to be afforded the same privilege as anybody, any other Commissioner here. I think it's a good working group. Uh, we have quite a few people, uh, that have expertise in a lot of areas. Uh, but now we need to get, you know, the cultural, uh, aspect of the county involved in this. Thank you.
Okay, here's my suggestion as to how we might approach this. Um, I noted four major points here, I think, that we need to come to some agreement on. And the first one is actually the fourth one on my list, but I think it's probably the first one, that, um, maybe we consider changing the name of this group to striking the words Albuquerque Basin and just make it Aquifer Water Protection and Oil and Gas Citizens Working Group. Um, so with that on the table, is anyone willing to propose that approach?
So moved, and that was the original intent?
Do we have a second?
Second?
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Block.
Aye.
Commissioner Holden Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapman?
No.
No.
Vice Chair Eichel?
Yes.
And, um, Chair Heil.
Yes. Okay, so another point here is, um, the organization of the group and the potential of, uh, adding additions to the group based on, uh, maybe coming back with some recommendations so that we review this in two weeks with proposed additions. Um, any thoughts on that?
Definitely not.
Okay.
I would just say, Mr. Chairman, that the list as is is incomplete. Uh, as I look at it, I mean, it clearly says here on the document that, uh, we're waiting for, uh, tribal leadership approval for Ms. Ortega to be a part of the group, um, which, you know, in my mind, brings up a challenge. Um, if you are going to have somebody in this group that represents the All Council, All Pueblo Council of Governors, man, I'd want everybody on that, in that group to sign off on that person and say, "Yep, this person represents me in this effort." And the reason why is, is because if you don't have that, they're, they're liable to say, "Well, we, we don't support what's been done because we never gave that authority to that person." So if there is going to be one person in this group, just one person in this group that's representing the All Pueblo Council of Governors, man, I'd like to see something in writing from that All Pueblo Council of Governors that says, "We give this person the authority to represent us in this group."
Okay, so, um, I guess what I would ask is for a motion...
And then, of course, I'd like to make a couple of recommendations to the group since I, I have not been a part of this process.
First, we got to get on the table that, uh, we've got a majority here who are willing to accept additions to the group, okay? So do we have a motion to add some, so add some people from...
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Second?
All right, any further discussion about who those people might be?
Well, I mean, uh, are we going to have two weeks or not? Because I would like to be able to contact this one person to see if they'd be willing to serve.
Well, being, being that we're making these kind of amendments to the process, I expect that we're going to have to have two weeks.
Okay.
But I, but I would like to make, I guess what I would like to see as proposed is that it be a reasonable number of people. When you get a group that's too big, you know, so maybe, you know, we're adding two or maybe three people at the most to this group, otherwise it gets to be too much.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say three. I mean, you've got twelve people on there now and four Commissioners, so that's three apiece. I've had no input whatsoever, and I think I can recommend some people that are...
Okay, sure.
Highly qualified to be a part of this group.
So first of all, we have a motion and a second that, uh, we're willing to add people to the group. Um, let's get a vote on that, and then we can decide how many, okay? So we have a motion and a second to add persons to the group. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Block.
Aye.
Commissioner Holden Rhodes?
No.
Commissioner Chapman?
Absolutely.
Vice Chair Eichel?
Yes.
And Chair Heil.
I guess I could concur with that up to and not exceeding three. Okay, so who are, uh, if we're going to do that, um, it seems like, what I've heard, that Commissioner Ike Wald should have a person to add to the group and that, uh, Commissioner Chapman, um, might have two people to add to the group. Does that, well, then that makes it sixteen, so, and we're getting a little... Well, pretty soon you've got a group that's totally unmanageable, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
So we have eleven vote, eleven voting members here with one non-voting leader. And, and I understand the importance of having, um, a fair amount of representation from Commissioner Ike Wald's district, and I think that's appropriate. But Rio Rancho is affected, um, by this ordinance immensely. And yet there's only one person from Rio Rancho, which has about seventy-five percent of the entire county's population. I think Rio Rancho is underrepresented on this, and, um, I, I think that's a problem. I, I think, you know, um, you know, my district, I have Corales, which needs to be on here. But Rio Rancho is also part of my district, and it's the largest city, uh, by far in Sandoval County. I think it needs more representation.
Okay, so does anyone have a proposal as to limited number that we're going to add to the group?
Well, again, if it gets too big, it's, it's just not going to get, get anywhere. That's, that's the problem. Um, you know, I don't know if we add a couple of people from Rio Rancho and subtract two from somewhere else. I mean, I'm, I'm just throwing ideas out there to get this going, but I want, I want to make sure that, you know, Commissioner Ike Wald's district is fairly represented.
Commissioner H.R.
Chairman, the group that was selected, was selected for expertise, but also with a proviso that they would turn to their fellow citizens and reach out to them individually and collectively. Um, what we're doing now is making this, this team unmanageable by adding more people. That said, I say again to you that they have a task to fulfill, but that's accomplished by talking to those around them. A good example would be Bill Deaton up on the Forgotten Side of the Mountain, who's going to be turning to Karen Yank, Turquoise Trail. Already talked to Karen this afternoon. So the lines of communication are already set. Uh, to keep adding people, um, destroys the whole concept of command and control on this thing.
Well, we've already had a, a decision that we're willing to add people to the group, and I understand your position, but I'm trying to move this to some way that we can move forward on it. So if someone were to make a recommendation that we would add X number of people to the group, and maybe we would give, uh, Commissioner Chapman two people and give Commissioner Ike Wald one person, that that would be a way to approach it. And make, make a proposal and let's get a second.
Let me, let me make a proposal, Mr. Chairman, because I, I think, uh, a good point has already been made. You've got a hundred, almost a hundred thousand people in Rio Rancho, and there's nobody on this list from Rio Rancho.
Yes, sir, there is.
There's one.
You got to turn the page.
Eddie, Eddie Paulsgrove?
Edward Paulsgrove, geologist.
So you've got one, one person representing a hundred thousand people?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, I, you know, I think, I think my point is well-made.
Get something on the table that we can deal with.
Well, I, I've already said, I, you know, for me, I think it's three people minimum that I, and I can call upon some people that have some real expertise to be a part of this group.
So do we have a second that, uh...
I mean, we're not going to just have people from Corales and Placidas in part of this group.
I understand that. I'm trying to get this moving so we get to someplace, okay?
Okay.
So Commissioner Chapman has made a motion that he be allowed to add three people to the group. Do we have a second? Okay. Would you like to propose something else that we might get a second?
Doesn't seem like a very democratic process to me.
I'm trying to...
We're talking, all, making all these remarks about we the people and everything, and you want to exclude a hundred thousand people who live in the county?
I, I don't want to exclude, I don't want to exclude anybody.
I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about Commissioner...
I would like to get, well, whatever, then, this is a democratic process. So we're trying to move it through so that we get to something we can come back to voting on, uh, the next meeting, okay?
Yeah, I, I think three's a fair number. I mean, my goodness, that's a very small amount of representation.
Commissioner Chapman, you don't have a second on your three, so if we could get a second...
Okay, I'll, I'll propose four then. I'd like to make a motion that I, I'd be allowed to add four people to the group then. That would probably be closer to being representative as a population.
Do we have a second on that? Does anyone else have a proposal here with regard to how we can move this forward?
I, I do. I think three people, and, Mr. Chairman, I would propose they be from Rio Rancho. I get one, you get one, and Commissioner Chapman gets one.
I don't agree with that.
Well...
I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to allow, minimize myself to one recommendation. I, I've already proposed some people that are experts in the field. And, and, and I'm telling you, I think you need some experts to keep this group out of the weeds and, and not propose something that is just dead on arrival when it comes before the commission, because the commission can't pass it anyway because it preempts state, federal, whatever laws. So I mean, that's, that's a key component.
I don't disagree with your concept. I'm just trying to get this off the dime, otherwise we could be here till time is for me to catch... me to catch my plane.
Yeah. And you know what? I, I'm not going to be limited either to people that live in Rio Rancho. The reason why is because there are not enough experts that I know to live in Rio Rancho to speak to this, but there are enough experts that I know out there.
I don't care if I have any choices, as long as we have the right representation on this group of expertise, okay? That's my biggest concern, is that we have expertise on this. And you made a few good points with regard to expertise that maybe ought to be on here. So, but I'd like to get, anybody got a suggestion here? I'll make one.
I, you know, even though we're talking about how many people are being recommended, but in our reality, I'm looking at, you know, if you're saying that I'm getting the two representatives from the Pueblos, in our reality, that should occur anyway. It doesn't matter, it shouldn't be my recommendation.
It's already on here.
Okay. That should, so that's not really mine. That should automatically be happening. There should be a representation of the Native American community up in the cube area. That shouldn't be mine. That should be just on the table because it should happen. I have one that I, that I recommended was the chairman of the P and Z, which was a partial. So technically speaking, I'm actually saying one person. The other people should be there automatically because of the region and who they represent, not, not because I'm appointing them. So, you know, if everybody's going to start saying, well, I want to recommend this expert, this expert, this expert, we're never going to agree on this. I think we should limit it to 15 people and inclusive of who's already there. And there's three right there. We have 12.
So is that a motion that you want to limit the number to 15 people?
I will make that motion.
Do we have a second? Not going anywhere in this.
I'll second.
There's a second.
He seconded it? Any further discussion on the 15? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Block. Commissioner Holden Rhodes.
Nay.
Commissioner Chapman.
I was just doing some quick math there. It looks like you've already got 13 people. So if you make it 15, you're only going to add two people.
Actually, it's, I think it's 12 because Phil...
Well, let's clarify the list then. I mean, you know, who's not on here that?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. I've got 10 voting members on this.
But then you've got all these other contingencies.
You've got a team leader that's not voting, and you've got two planning and zoning support people who are not voting.
Mr. Chairman, I count 11 voting members.
Okay.
Yeah, so 11, and so if you say 15, then that only leaves four.
We're getting somewhere.
So we still?
I mean, there, you know what? There's nothing magical about 15, 16, 18, or 20 for that matter.
You're absolutely right. We don't come to some agreement. We're not going to get anywhere on this.
Yeah, but, but I don't understand the desire to limit the number of people that are part of this process. I mean, the reality is, over the last two years, there's been hundreds of people that have been part of the process. Hundreds.
Mr. Chairman, we're in the middle of a vote.
And the number was 15. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Chapman.
No, I'd like to see more.
Vice Chair Ikewald.
Yes.
Chair Hyo.
Yes. Okay. So the next item, so coming to the next meeting, what I would recommend, and looking for some input on this, is that come to the table with some recommendations.
I'll have them.
Don't wait, don't wait till the next meeting. Make some recommendations, and that we can consider at the next meeting.
The only issue with that, sir, is I never got to consider these recommendations.
Well, you're getting to consider them now. If you don't like them, then in your next recommendation, say no.
You're telling me I can start removing people from your list?
Get off the list.
Yeah.
You've got to start with something, Commissioner.
Yeah, but the problem is, you cooked up a list, and you brought it before the commission, and I had zip input on it and knowledge either about it, so I just want to make that point.
There's four potential slots.
I'm just making that point. I'm just making that point. I'll have recommendations for you, and that's not a problem.
So the next item, so the idea here is, we're going to come back with some recommendations so that we can vote on those recommendations for the next meeting. So we had a comment about rules and responsibilities. Do we need some more definition on rules and responsibilities?
Mr. Chairman, what I would ask Mr. Phillips to do is to go back and write a charter for us to review. And then the only other thing I would ask the commission to decide on is the process. First, I would, I would like to know, and I don't need the answer now from the county attorney, is if this Citizens Working Group brings a ordinance straight to the county commission instead of the Planning and Zoning Commission, does that violate any policy or state statute?
No, because you give the authority to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so you can take it away.
By the way, that's the next item.
Okay.
I want to know about rules and responsibilities. What are we going to do with regard to?
I would like to see the citizens come forward and present a charter at the next meeting, so we, as county commissioners...
How long, how many pages do you want the charter? You're right. That's where I'm going. So do you have some thoughts about rules and regulations that you would like to propose to this process that we could include in here?
Well, I'd like to know if it's a supermajority, a majority, what's a quorum, you know, basic things, how the meetings are going to be run, minute meetings, records, things like that. I think that's more than fair. If it's going to be 15 members, which it sounds like it might be, is it an eight? Because this issue is so important, do you need eight people to agree, or do you need, say, two-thirds, 10 out of 15? And I think the county commission needs to approve that charter because, number one, they're going to bring a ordinance in front of us, and we should be, have some type of oversight over this charter of how it's going to be run.
Okay. I think those are good suggestions, and now that they're on the record, I would ask that whoever's driving this document would come back with some guidance as to how we're going to deal with the issues that you pointed out. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now, item three, was P and Z or not P and Z?
Mr. Chairman, and again, we can put it up to a vote, but, and I appreciate the councilor's legal opinion, I just think it looks wrong to the public that they come straight to the commission. I like the process of going through the P and Z. I realize it's been debated numerous times in front of the P and C. It's been debated numerous times in front of the county commission. But we have a process that we have set for, we have procedures that we use. And if we're going to not follow those procedures for this, what else are we not going to follow the procedures on? I think it sends a bad message. I understand, I understand the intent of the Citizens Working Group, why they want to go around or exclude the P and Z commission and come straight to us. But I just can't get my head around it, because I think it sends the wrong message to other issues in the county. If you don't want to deal with a particular body, whether it's the quasi-judicial body or whatever body it is, you can go straight to the commission. I don't think that's right. And I've made my thoughts known to Mr. Phillips, Dr. Feldblum, Dr. Friedman on this issue. I was able to get one of my P and Z members as an advisor on here, so I appreciate, appreciated that. But that's just an area of compromise where I really don't think it's a compromise going through the process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we have, is that a motion that you wanted to go through, P and Z? Did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Of course, we have a second for that. But I would just like to add, it's already been done.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion on this item?
Let me make sure I understand what we're talking about, the motion. The motion is that whatever the citizens group comes up with, it's going to be vetted by the P and Z commission before it's brought to the county commission.
Right. It would go through the normal process of the P and Z.
And therefore, the P and Z commission is going to vote on it.
Yes.
Okay. I'm on board with that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this item?
I thought Commissioner Ikewald had something.
As long as, what I'm hearing is that the citizens group is going to craft the ordinance, and then basically a rubber stamp from the planning and zoning?
A rubber stamp?
Basically speaking, that's, if it is...
Not if they're going to vote on it.
No, they have to vote. It's...
I mean, see a rubber stamp?
Yeah, I understand they're going to vote, but what are they going to, are they going to have the opportunity to change the document as it, as they go along?
Of course, we're making sausage here.
So, I mean, are we going to be wasting 15 people's time and then, and then seven people's time from the planning and zoning, because we're doing things double here?
So I guess my question, Mr. Vice Chairman, or anybody on the commission, is when the citizens put forward an ordinance earlier called, I'll just call it the Friedman Ordinance, when they submitted that to the P and Z, did the P and Z make any edits to that document?
You might, you might want to talk to the director of planning and zoning about that, because he was part of the process the entire way.
I guess to answer your question, Mr. Vice, is I would imagine if this goes in front of the P and Z, they would have the authority to modify said document.
Yeah, if you want them to vote on it and sign off on it.
Which is the normal process.
Okay. We have a motion on the table.
Mr. Chairman, may I comment?
Yes, please.
We've screwed around with this for two years. There's a very strong feeling in the group that we've selected, but also out there with the public, that we need something that represents what we, the people, want. I've been personally attacked by the director.
Mr. Springfield.
Sir, let me finish, please.
Yeah, I just want to be careful about negative comments about staff.
I will be. We've been told by Mr. Chapman, by Mr. Springfield...
Oh, come on, Chairman. Let's have a little decorum here.
Excuse me when I'm talking, shut up.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Commissioner, it is inappropriate to attack fellow staff or commissioners.
I'm trying to explain something, sir. Bear with me. If I'm out of line, beat on me. We've gone through two years of duplicitous comments from the former chair and from the director.
Mr. Chairman, please. Let's have a little stability here or let's have a discussion.
Now, let's, let's move ahead with what the people want. I rest my case.
Okay. So if I recall where we were, we had a motion to take it through P and C, and we have a second, and we need a vote. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Block.
Aye.
Commissioner Holden Rhodes.
Nay.
Commissioner Chapman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ikewald. And Chair Hyo.
No. It carries. So what we have is we're going to, we're changing the name to exclude Albuquerque Basin. We're organizing the group to include up to 15. We have 11 voting now. That means that there could be four added, and certainly well prior to the next meeting, we'll have recommendations from Mr. Chapman or anyone else who wants to make some recommendations as to additional members. We're going to come up with some rules and responsibilities with regard to the voting process and the things that Commissioner Block mentioned, and we're going to bring it through P and Z. So with that said, we need a motion to postpone so that we can get those things done. It would be nice if we postponed it to a specific date.
You can move it out two weeks.
March 15?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Check it.
Any further comments or questions? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Block.
Aye.
Commissioner Holden Rhodes.
Nay.
Commissioner Chapman.
Yep.
Vice Chair Ikewald.
Yes.
And Chair Hyo.
Yes. Okay. We made some progress.